Hi everyone, this is Christina Marrera, President of Elizabeth Parents and Students Care. Earlier this week, we invited all four candidates to participate in an interview process and a questionnaire. And we have received a response from one of those candidates, Maria Lorenz. We urge you to do your due diligence in researching all of the candidates. And please note that this forum and interview are not an endorsement of any one particular candidate. We have provided an equal opportunity for all candidates to participate. And this interview does not indicate support for or opposition to any one candidate. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Ricky Castañeda, and I am a board member of the Elizabeth Parents and Students Care Group. Joining me tonight is Patty Galant, another fellow board member of the Elizabeth Parents and Students Care Group. In the questionnaire, you mentioned how you have been an advocate from the outside for quite some years. Please expand on your experiences as an advocate for folks who may not be familiar with your advocacy work.
Sure. So I started out advocating for my oldest when he entered this district. And I saw that there were other people that also needed help and were in this together. So I started to not only make myself knowledgeable about how to advocate for special education children, but I also decided that I was going to learn as much as I can to help others within the community. And there have been countless of parents in the community that I've helped advocate for their children, both at IEP meetings, also in the background, looking at their IEPs and seeing where the holes are in terms of where the gaps and where their kids can be doing better in terms of percentages for their IEPs. And also empowering the parents to understand that there is a section in the IEP where the parent can give their own feedback, and that's under the parental concern section. And empowering parents to speak up and definitely write down what they see as their concerns and not letting the school paraphrase those concerns for them. So my journey as an advocate has been quite long. I started learning through SPAN, the SRP program. Then I also did their SEVA, which is a special education volunteer advocate program. I then went and did the rights law program, which is online. I paid to do that program as well. And just recently during COVID, I finished COPA Seat 1 and Seat 2. And COPA stands for the Council of Parents, Attorneys and Advocates. And the Seat 1 is a very intensive program. It takes about, I believe, 26 or 20, yeah, 26 weeks. And then I also did Seat 2.
You listed a lot of goals and issues that should be addressed like graduation rates, academic progress, student mental health, and the Special Education Committee, uh, community. What role do you see the Elizabeth Education Association, the teachers' union, in addressing those community concerns? And do you see the union as a partner or an adversary to your goals?
So I think that the EEA does play a major part because there are our teachers. And I think it all starts with the union and seeing what it is that will make them also come to the table and help teachers alike, as well as the Elizabeth School Board. I don't think that that relationship has been a very good working relationship with the current administration in place. And I feel that it's very, very important to engage our unions and also bring them to the table to see what we can do better in terms of also teacher satisfaction and providing teachers with what they need in the district. I see the union as a partner, not an adversary. Unions are in place because there is something wrong or broken with the system. And they're there to help come to the table, collaborate, and come to a middle ground. That has not been the experience that I see that the teachers are having here. So I think that I personally, if elected, would like to call the union and do a survey with the union to see what is it that's their pain point and how as a board member I can help to ease that for them. In terms of the Special Education Committee, I would like to invite the union to understand that it's not just parents that are part of a special education committee. It's also teachers that are there. In terms of an academic perspective, providing the union with the resources that they need, our teachers that are frontline, that are seeing what's going on. They need to be provided with those resources. And part of those resources include counselors that also address mental health, but also collaborating with the teachers that if they see something, to say something so that we can help the students in our community. In terms of academic growth and graduation rate, helping to identify children that are at risk a lot earlier, children that are struggling, so that we can be able to get them the help that they need. There should be no reason why Elizabeth cannot meet a state target for graduation rates if we all work together to make that happen.
If elected to the school board, how do you see yourself collaborating with the other elected school board members in achieving your goals?
Definitely the use of persuasion. I will definitely and certainly be outnumbered. But I'm hoping that there are others that are there that are willing in the best interest of our children to be able to put that forward above any politics or any other special interest issues that are there. I believe first and foremost that our children come first. Parental support is highly, highly needed. And in order to do that, we need to be able to collaborate. So I'm hoping that there will be other school board members that are there that are willing to collaborate and will put the children first and put their personal feelings and special interests aside.
Are there like any board of board members that are like, you know, someone that you could say you could be a partner or someone reliable that you can get on your side if elected?
I think that there are some that are flexible and are reasonable. But I also think that a lot of the narrative, because of my advocacy, has gotten into others' ears and created a certain perception. Some board members do not engage because of that narrative. But I'm a big fan of not judging a book by its cover. And it's come to light and some have been very flexible and have come forward to speak to me and talk to me, even unbeknownst to some of their peers. But they have worked with me and have listened to my concerns, and that's a good thing.
You mentioned in your answers, special education parent advisory committees a lot in your responses. Can you tell the audience, what is a CPAC?
Sure. The CPAC is a Special Education Parent Advisory Council. By law, every district in the state of New Jersey should have a CPAC. And a CPAC, according to the guidance from SPAN and also the New Jersey Department of Education, is so that parents can come together and that we can look at where we are having systemic issues. Those systemic issues should be collected and it should be brought to the attention of the board members in hopes that they can be resolved. And what I mean by that is, one person may have an issue. For example, you Ricky, you may have a child that has to wait for a bus to go drop off the regular kids in Gen Ed and they leave the special education kids last. Patty may have a child that has the same issue. Now that's two issues that's happening. And then maybe three or four more parents that have the same issue. And that is a problem. That's considered a systemic issue that we will then go ahead and bring to the board and say, hey, why is this happening? And how do we resolve these systemic issues? That is the purpose of a CPAC. And it's also there to help educate parents on their basic rights in special education. Unfortunately, here in Elizabeth, the CPAC has not existed for quite some years. I was the first president of the CPAC in Elizabeth. It was this policy that they put in place. If you look at the year, it was about several years ago, over seven, I would say, that they put this policy in place. And they essentially took me out of the CPAC and created their own. So initially, the district was looking for parents. And I was called as one of those parents to come to the meeting, and I did. And I was elected board, I was elected president of the CPAC. After that, they created a policy. I was doing, I guess, to create a job, educating our parents and collecting systemic concerns, that they created the policy so that they can cherry pick the parents that they wanted to participate. The policy originally was written that it was the PTO president who had to pick a parent. And I said, that is not correct because not everybody wants to say that their child is special needs or wants to be identified. And why should you have to pay money already in a low income, middle income place where money is tight? You're going to have to pay money to be a participant of the PTO to then get elected on a CPAC. That didn't make any sense. When I threatened to file a complaint on that, they changed the policy. And they made it so that the school principal and a member of the child study team would pick the parents that they want to participate. It's come to my attention that lately, a lot of the parents selected for the CPAC don't even know what it is. They have no clue what it is. And they're being trained by the district attorney, who is the same attorney that if that parent went to court and said, I have a problem with this IEP and we're going to go through the process, it's the same attorney that will fight them in court. So I think that's a conflict of interest. We haven't had a functioning CPAC. If we did, I'm sure that we wouldn't cover a lot more issues that are going on in Elizabeth with a population of over 20,000 kids in enrollment and about 10% being special needs. We have about 3,000 kids that are identified as being special needs. And if all of those 3,000 parents came to a CPAC meeting, we would have a big difference.
You briefly mentioned the term function, a functioning CPAC. And I think you did briefly describe a little bit, but can, are you able to expand a little bit more as to like what a fully functioning CPAC could look like?
Absolutely. A fully functioning CPAC would include a CPAC that not only has workshops, but has regular meetings with parents. It's out there in the community to collect the concerns. It's interacting with the board members, reporting back to them, letting them know, hey, we're hitting pockets of information here where parents, for example, are not being translated appropriately when they go to their IEP meetings. That's a big problem. I mean, we see it today even at board meetings where they don't have the translator. There's no box for the person to check that they need a translator. And then oftentimes, we end up having to tell the parent to go last because the translator stepped out of the room. It's just a total inconvenience and disrespect to the community. So the CPAC is meant to bring parents together, educate them, teach them about their rights, run workshops to collaborate, and to identify those systemic concerns so that we can fix them. I know that language and interpretation was a big pain point. That was something that I've also noticed, and I filed a complaint at the level of the Office of Civil Rights. I won that complaint. Since then, the Elizabeth Public School was put on a corrective action where the website needed to be translated in all languages. And in addition to that, information had to go out to the parents in different languages. And if a parent requested a translator, one needed to be provided to the parent. So that was a huge win, not just because I filed a complaint, but because it was a huge win for the Latino community, for those that are Haitian in our community, for the immigrants and refugees that came here into our community to be able to get the information and understand the information in their native and mother tongue.
Will you welcome immigrants in open arms?
Yes, I would. Absolutely. This is considered the land of opportunity and freedom. And a lot of people either are being persecuted or dying in their own countries. And they're escaping situations in their country that puts their lives in peril. And they're coming here for a better opportunity. They want to be able to succeed. And this is a place that gives those opportunities. So I believe that everyone has the equal right to be educated and gain fully employed.
Your answers in the questionnaire that we sent out about vaping, it was kind of unclear. It's our understanding that parents are meeting with the school when there is an incident of vaping. How are your suggestions about, you know, vaping situations, any different from current board policy? And you also mentioned in that questionnaire that like devices should be confiscated by who? And what if the student had no device?
So right now, the policy, as I understand and read it, is that the device gets confiscated. I believe they contact the authorities, the police department. And there is a meeting or a potential fine to the parent. There shouldn't be punitive to the parent at all. And the parent gets a referral to an outside service. This is an issue that's very prevalent in our community. The parent shouldn't be referred to outside resources. There should be enough counselors in the school that are able to go ahead and address and meet with the parent and the child. And that's been a longstanding situation that, you know, I've been advocating for as well. It's more resources. We don't have enough guidance counselors in our schools to tackle this. And we see that kids are already vaping in fourth and fifth grade. This is really sad, and it's affecting our community. If they're being confiscated, I think that's a step in the right direction. But we also need to educate our students by way of having a lot of annual meetings, whether that be three times a year, explaining the risks that they run when they do that and the bodily harm that they do to themselves in vaping, ensuring that the parent is very well aware of what's happening, and removing the punitive fine. I mean, that's just ridiculous. You're finding the parent for something a child did when you should be helping. You should be helping the family. And it's not just with vaping. It's a lot of other social situations that happen in our schools that affect the children at home, and that carries over into the school setting.
What would be the, like, I guess, if, if, if the policy that exists right now isn't necessarily the best? If you can kind of like expand a little bit as to like what would be policy that would be, I guess, less punitive to the child and to the families and something that's a bit more, I don't know, like just what, 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 what is it that you envision in a, in a good policy in this situation?
I would envision that there's a mandatory meeting to be held with the parent and the child. I would envision more workshops. I would envision more guidance counselors to be able to support the students and not just an outside referral. The outside referral is great for follow-up, but it doesn't tackle the immediate situation. And our community has already resources that are overburdened by trying to seek help, even in the mental health space. And we were not able to get the help because there's a huge waiting list. So I think that guidance counselors are a good step. Social workers are a good step to step in, and that should be mandatory.
There's like a local organization that's actually been advocating on this work, Make the Road New Jersey. I believe they still have an ongoing campaign titled Counselors Not Cops. Is that something that you would say that you, you're familiar with? And or, and like, do you feel like the messaging in the campaign parallels with what you envision in good policy in regards to students caught with vapes or anything related to, to that sorts?
I was not aware that they had this campaign going on, so thank you for informing me. Not above learning something new every day. But that is, that, that would be something that I would envision and partnering up with and, and joining that campaign to also support that.
The city has not increased their monetary contribution to the school board in decades. How do you feel this impacts our school district long-term?
I know that our board members keep touting a 0% tax increase. But at one point, I believe that Hoover Dam is going to break and it's going to flood pretty bad. It affects us because we're not getting that fair share from the city itself. So in essence, that leads to further cuts. And unfortunately, 99.9% of the time, those cuts come toward, at the expense of our children. And that shouldn't be. The city should be liable to pay their fair share. We already saw a tax increase this year. Increased taxes should also come with money that's being spent and shared with the Elizabeth Public School.
There's like rhetoric, especially popular among homeowners, that my taxes are high. How can you combat that noise? How, how would you be able to convey that noise that like raising taxes or? I don't know. How, 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 how would you, how would you communicate that message to folks that are concerned about their taxes?
Their taxes are already high, but it, just like you stated, those, those share of the taxes that should go to our education system is not going to the education system. So I think the bigger question is whose pocket is this money going into and why? Because we see the tax increase, but we don't see the increases or the, the major things that are changing in the Elizabeth Public Schools. I mean, if I'm looking as a taxpayer, I, I bought a house, for example, based on the fact that I was told that this was the number one urban school district. But the number one urban school district can't graduate a child on time. The number one urban school district cannot guarantee that my child is going to be college ready, no matter how many credits, whether it be 160 to 130. They still can't say that my child is going to go and seek a further education on it. So where really the question becomes, where's my tax money going? Because it's not going to go to the schools, and we already see that there's a lot of issues in the school. It's not being reinvested into the community. We're not getting more counselors. We're losing teachers at a very rapid pace. After COVID, even more so. We're losing teachers. We don't have enough resources. So like I said, the touting of the rhetoric of 0% tax increase, but that dam is going to break. And I think it's already starting to show. The prax are there, and they're starting to show. I'm going to complain absolutely because my, my, my children are not reaping the benefits of what they should be. They're just simply not. We're seeing that programs are being cut, programs are being minimized, we're losing teachers. So where is the money going? If we're not increasing, if the city, if we're not demanding that the city pay their fair share, where is the money actually going? Because it's not going to the betterment of our school districts. If I looked at the performance for NJSLA in math, we had 26 elementary schools. Only one school passed a state exam. And in English, I believe it was 15 out of 26 that passed that. It was between 13 or 15 to be, to right around that range out of 26 schools past the NJSLA. So how are we preparing them for high school, much less college? That tells me a story that we just don't have the resources and that we don't have the resources because we're not demanding that the mayor pay us our fair share, and that's a problem.
When speaking to voters, there may be, there may be certain voters out there that are no longer parents or have kids that are in the school board system. And some might say that like, well, the school board, I don't have kids in the school system anymore, so why should I care? Why should I even pay attention to these issues? So what do you say to them?
What I say to those voters is, your taxes are still being taken out, so you should care. You should also care because if a child is dropping out and isn't in school, that child is on the street. That child has been misdirected, is on the street, probably can't get a job. And idle hands tend to bring trouble into the mind. These kids are not engaged, and that should be, that should be something that they should look at. The dropout rate and what happens when people drop out of school is pretty sad. I mean, I was a high school dropout myself. So I know all the sacrifice and the work that it took for me to sit here today with two master's degrees. I was a dropout. I had no intention of going back to school. And it depends on the circumstances also of the child and what they're going through at home. And I think that we should all be supportive as human beings and citizens to want our kids to get a good education and to get, to get a, a good job and not walk the streets panhandling or having other issues. Because that just, it doesn't collaborate with, into society. We want to be able to make sure that we're all good citizens, right? And that we're working, and they should care. They should definitely care, whether they're an older, older population, you know, senior citizens as well. It affects all of us.
Substitute teachers in the, in the district are outsourced, at least a good majority of them, if not all. What is your opinion about that?
I dislike the fact that we're outsourcing. There should be no reason why we can't have a steady list of substitute teachers that are floaters. It could be done. I think it's just spending more money on giving out contracts to other people and trying to be penny wise by not giving out benefits. I've seen there's a lot of issues with outsourcing because the school doesn't take responsibility for them, and they take the benefits off their plate, and they're not responsible, so to speak, for the outsourced employees. But this is a problem that we're having and we're constantly going to have. Even people that work for the outsourcing are not guaranteed. They may decide to find a permanent job somewhere else, I don't know, maybe Newark. And they, they're happy to work in that environment, and then we're just keep, keep the rotation going. And that's not good. I think that we should have a steady list of substitute teachers that are backup teachers. If we pay them fairly and we give them a good contract, there's no reason for them to leave.
How, how would that be paid for?
Well, if they got the fare of the city, that should have been paid. That shouldn't be a problem, especially if it was compounded year over year. It should, it should be paid by creating jobs that are necessary and not giving jobs to our friends and family members. Because there's been a lot of positions that I've seen that have been created or they have been, you know, put in or slotted for particular people. That should not be the case. We should be creating jobs that, that make sense, headcount that makes sense. We should be able to hire the best individual for that role, the most qualified individual for that role. And I think that if they really looked at their expenses and saw what their administrative cost is, that would make sense. For starters, that raise that the superintendent got was pretty outrageous. Even our teachers don't even get a raise of $34,000 plus. That could be the, the salary for an employee. And instead, she got a raise. I mean, I think we need to have good management and ask those hard questions that I'm not hearing or being asked by our current board members. And once we start asking those hard questions, it's, we get to the bottom of where exactly we can get these funds to do that.
There are groups across the state who are trying to lobby school districts to ban books that discuss a range of topics, from queer voices to Palestinian voices. If a group were to try to lobby you to silence such voices, how would you go about it?
Oh, I wouldn't accept that at all. Not at all. I grew up with some of these books that they're trying to ban. And you read them, you learn from them, and you learn not to repeat those mistakes. I think that banning them is just absolutely absurd. I wouldn't, I wouldn't go with that at all. There's actually a very interesting book that I'm reading called How to Hide an Empire. And it talks about the Philippines and Puerto Rico and Guam. And it talks about all this history that I was never taught in history class. And I think that if we became more savvy and started to teach our children the history, we would have not only better educated, but we would have a culture of people that understood where they come from, and they don't need to ask themselves that question.
Amistad, the, you know, curriculum of inclusion. Is, is that something that you see that the Elizabeth Board of Education is doing a good job in implementing or needs improvement? What, what's, what's going on with that? Because I don't think I've heard Amistad being talked about in a while.
It's been years, Ricky. You see me laughing, but that, yeah, it's been years. It's something that everyone was gung ho and then it went radio silent. Okay? I'm not even hearing Morse code being, being typed in to bring this back. I think it's an important part of what happens. I think it should be taught to every student. And I don't think Elizabeth is doing a good job of incorporating that into the curriculum and teaching the kids. I've never heard my child come home and talk about it. And a lot of what he's learned has been from me, taking him back to our roots, taking him back to our island, teaching him the history, showing him where he comes from, and explaining to him what happened on the island of Puerto Rico. And I think that he's learned on the island of Puerto Rico. And I think that he's learned more through me than he has from anything he was taught in history class. And I think it's sad because I think it's depriving our community and our our students from learning what really happened, what took place. And you know, understand that that's not acceptable going forward. And I think in today's politics from some of the rhetoric that we're hearing, it's uh even more prevalent than not for them to understand and know what happened so that we're not repeating those mistakes again.
Real quick, Maria, could you explain um what the Amistad curriculum is?
The Amistad curriculum is pretty much putting into a bright, a bigger scope for the children, what happened. Um from Africans that were bought over as slaves through the slave trade through civil rights, civil rights movements also play into that because that's how we have the rights that we have today. And just teaching them that 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 was a shameful part of history, right? That should have not been repeated. Uh today being Columbus Day, it's even more insulting. Uh because it all started with him. The majority of it started with him and other conquistadors that came and also did their fair share. Um but I think that it was pretty much the kidnapping of African people being sold off as slaves, indentured slaves, so as slaves that were not paid, were beaten, used, abused, and thrown away as if they meant nothing. Thanks to great leaders like Martin Luther King, uh thanks to many civil rights leaders that that have stood up for our rights today. We are here. We have the right to vote. We have the right to be equal. Women have rights today. Uh where before we would not. And I think it's 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 developed into, it feeds into the greater picture of what we have today.
We have questions from the audience uh that submitted. Uh we posted this in our Facebook group a couple days ago. Uh we got some questions and Patty, I will pass the mic to you to read some of those questions.
A question came from our group and it mentions concerns that there will be no after school program this year. However, a couple of days ago, the superintendent notified the community that there will be an after school program. As that program stands, do you believe that that after school program in Elizabeth is adequate? Why or why not?
I don't believe that the programs that they put out are adequate. We had a lot more programs in the past, programs that address not only the academic, but also the arts. Which I'm hearing is not being uh very widely advertised and the cuts and I've heard from parents that have come to the school board to talk about how their programs are being diminished to nothing. It cuts out the arts and the music enrichment. And these are things that children look forward to. These are things that were there before. And I don't understand, I have to say Elizabeth Patterson Students Care is a definitely a force of nature. Because the minute that went up, the response came out very quickly. Um it seemed almost haphazardly thrown together that now you all know these are the programs, but we're gonna address more of the academics. Uh sports is important, academics is important, but also arts and music is super important important. And it's a it's a part of having a well-rounded uh amount of programs to be able to help these kids after school. That's not exactly what happened. Um so I I think we could do better.
Another question that came up or concern was the shortage of teachers in Elizabeth. How will you address that teacher shortage?
Think we have to, I think the most important thing we have to do is talk to the union and understand the reasons why these teachers are leaving. Um not everybody leaves for money. There are people that may leave because they're dissatisfied with how they're being treated. Uh it could be simple things that people are just, it compounds to the point where you just walk away and you say, you know what? It's not even about the money. Sometimes it is about the money. So I think it's very, uh being a human resource professional myself and conducting a lot of these exit interviews, I can tell that money is not the only reason why people leave. It could be job dissatisfaction. It could definitely lead to lack of resources. So what I wanna be able to do is to put out a very thoughtful survey to understand some of these reasons from the EEA to understand why our teachers are leaving us. And to see what it is that we're being, that we're offering these teachers that we're we're bringing on new. Because it could be something as simple as doing a sign up bonus. It could be as simple as saying to a teacher, hey, don't leave. You're a good teacher. You're a good performer. Let me offer you a retention bonus. I need to see what it is that the Elizabeth Public Schools is or isn't doing. Because at this point, what I do know and what from what I've seen is that they're not, they're not playing fairly with the EEA. Uh they're not seeing them as a collaborator. They're seeing them as an instigator. They're seeing them as well, well, I'm looking for the word. The word escapes me, but they're not seeing them as a partner when they should be seeing them as a partner today. And 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 moving forward, um I think it's a definitely a conversation that has to be had around the table. I don't think it's happening. I think we like to, you know, throw out updates, through committee updates, right? Uh but we're not hearing anything substantial as to why is there a communication breakdown? What is it that we're not budging on? And you know, what what is the mountain that we're willing to die on today? Because it may not be worth it. Uh I would much rather keep the teachers than continue to lose them uh to other districts and see what other districts are offering and uh come and compared to Elizabeth. We are a very big school district. There should be no reason why we're losing teachers. I mean bleeding them, leaving to Newark. Leaving to other areas of the state. It's just why? I I want to understand why and the and the answers are in those exit surveys that answer lies with the EEA president. Being able to communicate that. And like I said, I just don't think the board is giving them a fair shake to be able to say, hey, these are reasons why our teachers are leaving and the board saying, hey, let's come to the table. Let's see what we can do for them. Because at the end of the day, they're not, there wouldn't be a school if it wasn't for teachers. Students make up a classroom, yes, but the students are left guideless without teachers to support. They are the backbone. So we need to start treating them with respect, dignity and fairness.
Somebody from the group is has always been curious as to why our schools don't have life skill classes like cooking, sewing and economics. Care to expound or give us your opinion about that?
When you talk about life skills, you know, the first thing that popped into my head was the ShopRite program that was supposed to be put up in Edison that burned down and never came back. And that is absolutely atrocious. Uh I think that those are great things to do if it wasn't because of life skills, you know, going to high school myself, I was giving an economics class. This cheese costs four dollars. This cheese costs one dollar. Taste both of them. Which one is better? They're about the same. Why are you paying three dollars extra? It's a financial literacy, sewing classes. I mean, I'm glad I can sew a button and I don't have to run to the dry cleaners to sew it for me. And I can be self-dependent and self-sufficient that way, right? Uh economics, again, big, a big portion. What happens with inflation and how do we flex and adjust? You know, maybe you can't buy that six dollar box of cereal and you gotta buy the generic brand. Actually, cereal is pretty bad. They put so many things in it nowadays. Uh wrong example. Uh but you know, I I think that life skills is a very important thing that should be taught. I think it's not something that's taught widely and it should be. And moreover, I think it's absolutely despicable that we don't teach it to our special needs population. Life skills isn't just cleaning a tabletop at a school and having them work to clean. It's teaching them more than that. It's teaching them to be self-sufficient, to be able to go to the grocery store and compare prices and shop for themselves. To be able to cook. I mean, half of these kids nowadays can't even boil mac and cheese. I mean, I'm struggling with my kids. I I'm just hoping they don't burn my kitchen down one day, but you know, I I prep the meals, I put them in and I say, just put it in the microwave for this much. But I do take it upon myself to at least teach them at home. But this is something that should also be taught in school. These were things that we were taught growing up in school. So I don't understand why it's such a burden to teach this today to kids. Half of these kids are going off to college and guess what? They're having pink laundry. Because they miss their, they they mix the black with the red and guess what you get when you mix those colors? It's pink. I know because I did it by mistake one day. So these things should be taught. Uh I agree that these classes should come back. Um and the school should be able to teach us. I know many parents will sit there and go, well, it's a parent's job to. Yes, but we also have to consider that there are many situations out there for parents. There's single parents, such as my mother, who didn't have time because she worked several jobs. And then there's the dual, there's the dual house that that ha- that can have that. So I think that um these are skills that need to be brought back. So that kids aren't burning down their college dorms trying to cook some mac and cheese and making pink laundry.
Before we get to the portion where um we ask for a closing statement. I'm just curious, you know, just to pick your brain a little bit. If you can choose any any superhero power, what would it be?
Well, that's a tough one. I wish I could be more like Superman, where I get a chance to help everyone. Okay, I hear those cries for help and I can run and help that person in need. I mean, it's 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 hard because I can't help everyone, right? Um in my in my advocacy world, I wish there were ten of me so that I can help all the parents in Elizabeth to be able to advocate for their kids, but there's only one me. And there's only so much that I can do uh to help a family. And I wish that we had a team of advocates that would go out there and would help. So I think I would, I would choose the the power to help everyone just like Superman. And help those most in need. I think that would be the superhero power that I would get.
You're in Elizabeth. Night out. Where are we going to eat?
Night out in Elizabeth. Where am I going to eat? I will go to Rancho Mateo. Or Noches de Colombia. But not on karaoke night.
Controversial. What are you, what are you order? What's your order at Rancho Mateo?
At Rancho Mateo, I like the chicken Milanese. The the breaded chicken that's fried. I love fried food. I'm from the islands. My doctor would disagree with me and told me I have to check cholesterol levels, but fried food is exactly where I'm going. I'll I'll throw in a healthy salad for a good measure.
They can give you a side, so I guess that could be one of them.
That could be one of them.
That could be one of them. All right, well then, thank you so much again, Maria, for being here.
Thank you for inviting me.
Please, your closing statement now.
I would say, uh I've been a parent. I have two kids, uh teenagers now. Uh I've been in this district, my oldest is sixteen and I bought him over when he was five. So it's been about eleven years uh that I've been here in Elizabeth. No, actually more than that, fourteen, uh cause my youngest is fourteen. And I bought this house when I was pregnant with him. And I I've been a resident here for a very long time. Um I don't like injustices. I stand up to that. I advocate for change. I do it by speaking. I do it by trying to collaborate with people. Unfortunately, uh there's not been a lot of change in the Elizabeth Public School. If anything, I think from the older administration to this administration, it's gotten worse. It is now a mayor-controlled board with nine people that sit there, many of them that have conflicts. We have two board members that presently sit there with ethical charges because they couldn't tell what the ethical thing to do was. And I think that that's very sad because we're talking about people that we assume are educated people that know right from wrong, but then they still have ethics charges filed against them. It's time to put an independent parent. I don't think that I've ever seen any back and forth conversation or back and forth. Can you explain that to me more? It's a rubber stamp at this point. That's not benefiting our kids. I wanna be able to change that by having someone who's there, who's on the inside that scene. Who's not gonna go with special interests of any mayor or of any senator. I wanna be able to represent the community. I wanna be able to hear your voices, not shut you out as some of these board members have done. Uh or turn off your mic at three minutes and not give you the respect or the courtesy to finish. I will hear you. I want to work for you and our and for the better Elizabeth. To better the education system and improve our schools. I think we need to improve our schools before we think about moving forward. There's much to do in this district in terms of the graduation rates. There's much to do in this district in terms of meeting state standardized exams. There's much to do in taking out the state standard exams, academics. Improving academics, seeing where our kids are struggling, providing those resources. I think that's important. And in order to do that, we can only do that by putting change up there. And I'm that change. I want to be that change for the community. So I thank you all. My name is Maria Lorenz. I'm running for school board and I want to improve our schools. You can look for me in column two if you so which, and you can also go ahead and vote personal choice as well. I hope I have your vote. I hope that I am elected so that I can sit there and work for you.
Thank you so much, Maria, for being here with us. We really appreciate um you joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria.
Time and the opportunity. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Have a good night, Maria.
You too. Thank you.
That concludes the portion of the candidates forum. I just wanna emphasize with everyone that we are not endorsing a candidate that this forum is strictly just for informational purposes. Please do your due diligence and research all the candidates on the ballot and use your best judgment. Local elections really do matter. So uh just to add on to that, uh just some important dates to remember for the twenty twenty four election season. The deadline to apply for a vote by mail ballot uh via the post office is October twenty ninth. The deadline to apply for a vote by mail ballot at in person at the Board of Elections Office is November fourth by three P M. You can also choose to participate in early voting uh starting on October twenty six. And it runs until November third. Please go to UnionCountyVotes dot com for all early vote locations. And lastly, Election Day is on November fifth. Please go out and vote.